Yes.
No.
I don't want to pause.
Very clearly into the mic.
I'm not shaking hands.
You recording?
Hi.
Stephen Shing.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Darren Elkin. The city has hired me to be your facilitator. And I say this not just to be polite, but in all sincerity. It is actually my pleasure to do this with you. Briefly, by way of background, I've been a city attorney. I've never been in this building before. I'm not part of this community, so I know nothing about what issues you deal with on a day-to-day basis. But I routinely, routinely, a couple of times a month, get asked a question about a city charter, and what does the charter mean, and please interpret it. And I've litigated cases over what a particular charter means, but not the city of Oviedo's. And so, I'd like to just make a couple of comments to you about the process and get some input. But just sort of, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and wanted to just talk briefly about that. One is my role. I'm a facilitator. It's not my job to tell anybody what should or should not be in the charter, or what changes should be made to the charter. I'm going to facilitate the discussion. If there are questions of a legal nature, I'll be able to, hopefully be able to answer those for you, but I won't give any legal advice. I think the process is, as we move through the discussion of the charter, section by section, I'm going to listen to the conversation. I'm going to take good notes. I'm going to try to assimilate those issues about which there seems to be a lot of interest or some consensus into actionable items. And then ultimately, we will bring those items back to you for a vote. Things that you can actually vote on, yes or no, and send to the city commission. I need to talk with you briefly about public records. I know some of you are looking at the resumes, have served in public office, and know everything that I could tell you about public records. But I want to mention it very briefly. The sunshine law applies to the work of this committee and to you as members of this committee. So, in a nutshell, the public meeting law says that no two people of a committee, and that would be any two of you, should talk about any subject matter that's reasonably going to come before that committee outside of the public meeting. So, any two or more of you can talk about any subject that you want to. Just don't talk about anything to do with the city of Oviedo's charter outside of these meetings until this is all done. And you can talk about it all you want, or never talk about it again, as the case may be. Public records, I can't imagine that you all would be getting information or correspondence related to your work here. But on the outside chance that somebody from the public or somebody sends you something, the email or letter, give it to the city clerk. Make sure the city clerk has that. I don't imagine that would happen. So here's what I thought the process, yes, sir?
Sunshine law. And I brought this up the other night, but I'll bring it up again because most people weren't there. It also applies to us on the committee talking to elected council members also, doesn't it?
You can talk, so I'm going to put a finer point on this. There is no part of the sunshine law that says you cannot talk as a member of this committee with one member of the city council. But I would-
Regarding charter issues?
Yes, sir. But what I would suggest to you is that you do this work as a collegial body, and kind of, as long as this, it's kind of like judges say to jurors sitting on a jury trial. While this deal's going on, and it's going to be pretty quick, I'm going to talk about the schedule in a moment, don't talk about it outside of here. And then when this process is over, you can talk about it all you want. So I think for the sanctity of the process, to the extent you folks have been charged with this task of reviewing the charter and proposing amendments, that you do it here, and we discuss it here. And then when you make your recommendations as a body, those will go to the commission. They'll vote on it. And at the end of that process, if you want to talk all you want to talk about, or you may get through this process and want to talk about charters ever again in my life.
Well, I'm talking about, not outside talking to my neighbor. I'm talking about elected officials, the city council members. Are we allowed to talk to them?
Legally?
Legally.
I'm going to let you-
Under the sunshine.
Yes, sir. I'm going to tell you, and I'm going to look to your city attorney. I believe that you can. I think it's a bad idea, but, you know, and that's what I've told my elected officials for years. But technically, I don't, I'm not aware of any law that says you can't talk to another member of another body, because it's-
Well, they're going to be dealing with this eventually.
My advice to you, sir, and we'll leave it at that, is you're, I believe that you can lawfully do it. I don't think you violate any law if you do it. I think, I think the members of this body ought not to debate that. I think this body ought to debate amongst itself, and the commission ought to debate amongst itself. I think that's the purest way to conduct the process, but that's your prerogative to do as you please.
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, over here.
Okay.
The inquiries from the public, does that include social media?
When you said inquiries from the-
Well, when you said that the emails and letters that we receive regarding this work should be handed over to the city manager, which is great.
Or city clerk, right?
City clerk.
Unless you tell me something else you get.
Does that apply to comments or questions that we get via social media?
So, I'm going to answer your question, but I want to qualify it with, I'm a little old school. I don't have a Facebook account. I don't have a Twitter account. I don't have an Instagram, and my 13-year-old has to help me use my phone. So just with that being said, yes, it's any form of communication that you receive. To the extent that there's conversations, I would tell you that I would be surprised that there would be a conversation about charter review on social media, but I guess there's everything out there.
There will.
Okay. I would encourage, again, I cannot tell you that you really, or remember. The only rule applies to any two of you, or two or more of you, talking with one another. But as I have with other governmental organizations, I would suggest, because we're only going to be at this for a couple of months, that while the process is going forward and you're doing this work, that you let the social media folks say what they want to say on social media, not engage on social media. I can't tell you that you can't. You can't. But, does that answer the question?
Yes.
But if you get something, and again, I'm not so savvy with social media, but if you get a, I guess, a private message through social media as opposed to an email, then yeah, you should turn, related to your work as a committee member, yeah, you should give that to the city clerk. And they could tell you how to save it and forward it, because I couldn't begin to tell you how to do that. But I know there's a way to do it. So, I think I'd like to do this. I'd like to get from the committee members at first, and-
Yes, sir. There's one more quick thing.
Sure.
That happens, reply all, don't reply all. If there's messages out, it's an accidental thing. But if you start replying all by accident to messages that may come, just make sure you don't do that. It happens, and we get, it's happened before, which you accidentally reply all. A message will come across, or somebody will send something, or even from the city clerk's office, and then you reply all and have comments on it.
Had that happen the other day.
Exactly. It's an accidental thing, and that's why I just, you know, just-
But hopefully you won't be getting emails, but it sounds like maybe you will. So what I'd like to do initially is to get input, just have a sort of a free-flowing discussion with, tonight, with the committee, to find out are there some specific concerns that you all, that many of you have related to the charter? Is there some issue that I'm just totally not aware of? I bring no politics. I bring no baggage. I bring no preconceived notions to this meeting, that a bunch, at least some number of you want to talk about related to the charter. I'd like to know about that as we start the process. That's number one. Two, once we do that, we'll go through the charter. And we're going to start this, I think, at the next meeting. Not, I think, we are going to start at the next meeting. We'll go through the charter, section by section. Now, some sections, who's going to be the name of the city shall be, so we're not going to have much discussion about that, I hope. And we'll be able to breeze, we'll be able to breeze through those very quickly. Other sections, I suspect, are going to generate some discussion, and maybe not by everybody. Maybe there's particular folks that are concerned about some issues, and other folks who are concerned about other issues. But as we move through those, what I envision is we will talk about those, there'll be conversation about those. I suspect there'll be on some, not agreement on any particular issue. And so what I'm going to try to do on those issues where there are folks that are concerned and want to make a change on something, I'm going to take good notes. And I'm going to coalesce, you know, the group of comments on a particular topic, and try to bring it forth in a charter amendment, specific text of a charter amendment. So that when we get to the end of the process, and we've gone through each section, we'll have a list of any charter amendments that people talked about here at the meeting. And we will be able to vote, one by one, in the final meeting, on a set of charter amendments to recommend to the city council. As far as schedule, our next meeting, I'll go through the schedule with you in a moment. The next meeting is March 19th. Section 1 and Section 2 are going to be easy. I think we're going to do this quickly. Section 3 is going to take some time. So I'm hoping, hoping, that at the March, at the next meeting, we can knock out Sections 1, 2, and get, just let's go as far as we can before we get too tired on Section 3 at that meeting. Then, the next meeting after that will be April 9th. And hopefully, we can finish Article 3 and get into some part of Article 4. And then hopefully, the following meeting, two weeks later, is April 23rd, finish Article 4. I recognize that we may not move that quickly. And so we also have, on the schedule, May 14th and May 21st. So no reason we shouldn't be able to get through the whole process by then. If we move more quickly, we can, may not have to have one or two of those final meetings. In terms of public comment, I didn't think there'd be conversation on social media, but I was wrong about that, apparently. There may certainly, this is open to the public. So to the extent we have members of the public at any of the meetings, what I will do is after you conduct your work and go through the sections that we're going to cover tonight, we'll give the public an opportunity to get up and comment. And if based upon that comment, there's more discussion, we can have that discussion. And you, if you have additional direction for me based upon that comment, I'll listen to that, and I'll assimilate that into what we put together. One of the things that I will do after the meeting, after each meeting, and I've tried to coalesce your comments into actionable items, I will take some time and look at the rest of the charter, make sure we don't have any conflicts related to other sections of the charter, make sure whatever we're proposing is going to work. I can't comment on whether it's a good idea or not, but I want to make sure it works from a legal perspective. And that's the process. You know, and again, at the end, you'll have actionable items. If we're successful, you'll have actionable items that you can vote on, and we'll vote on them one by one. And if they get a majority vote, they go. If they don't get a majority vote, they don't go. But we'll have some report of what all of them were and what the votes were. Any questions so far about process? My thought is, in terms of a workload, we're going to start the meetings at 6:30. That if we can, if we can kind of plan on spending two hours at each meeting, is that comfortable for everybody? You know, I certainly can go longer. If we're in the middle of something, you all want to go longer. If we get far and people want to wrap up earlier, that's fine, too. I'm at your disposal in that regard. So with that, one of the things I want to find out is, what sorts of issues do any of you have that's specific? Not that we're going to need to vote on them tonight. I just want to identify any issues that are going to be, you know, overarching issues. I may want to go back and do a little research and give some thought to it, so I can, so we can have a good, meaningful discussion, so I can identify those. Anything like that, is there? Yes, sir?
Two things occurred to me when reading this. It doesn't, well, three things first. It doesn't need a lot of fixing. It seems pretty straightforward.
I agree with you.
But the two, two things that I noticed that we could address would be the term lengths in Section 30302, to change that from two years to four years for elected officials. The second thing that might need discussion or might not, and I think if we call upon Mr. Cobb, we might get some clarification on this, but it's Section 3.05 versus Section 4.01. The duties of the mayor and the duties of the city manager. I'm not sure that those are enumerated in the best, most practical way in those two sections. So that might need some discussion. It might get a quick, "Don't worry about it" from Mr. Cobb. But if we could ask Mr. Cobb at some point about that, then-
Okay. And let me understand that a little further. You mean the duties of the mayor and council versus the duties of the city manager, or what authority the manager has?
Almost. The duties of the mayor specifically in 3.05 parentheses 6, to execute ordinances, resolutions, contracts, agreements, and other instruments of the city. Whereas in a practical sense, the city manager executes or signs off on contracts. Now, I might be completely wrong, but this seems, the language here seems to be in somewhat contradiction to Section 4.01, and possibly in contradiction with the way things are actually done in a practical sense.
I got you. The one thing that I would say, it is typical, doesn't make it right, typical, that the city manager, or his or her designee of the city manager purchasing a, depends on the size of the organization, will exercise, execute contracts. Happens all day long. And then based upon the amount of the contract, whether it has to be approved by the council. And even if it's something that has to be approved by the council, oftentimes, the manager, his or her designee, is going to be the person that actually signs the agreement, because there may be changes. City attorney has to get involved, those sorts of things.
Exactly.
Typically, notwithstanding that, under charter interpretation, notwithstanding that a particular person or office holds a particular power, it is inherent, especially for the elected body, to be able to delegate that power. And so that's, that's pretty typical. But we, let's take a look at that and make sure, you know what we don't want to have happen with the charter? Is that people are able to, reasonable people anyways, unreasonable people can disagree about everything. But we don't want to have reasonable people be able to disagree about what the charter says. So that's, that's something I'll definitely take a look at. When we get to that part, we'll be able to discuss it. So that's just the sort of thing I want to identify. I assume, well, I don't assume, I know you have a delegation of authority from your council, and you identify, this is what we're going to let the manager sign, and it was not. You know, that probably changes over time, because sometimes you got a manager, you trust him or her to do lots of stuff. Then you get a manager you don't trust so much, and you want to let that down. So that can change over time. Is there anything else that anybody has a particular concern about going into this, or that's being talked about in the community, that's a sort of a hot-button issue that I should know about? Yes, sir?
I think somebody who's hand in glove with the length of terms is term limits or length of service. So depending, that could be addressed in two ways. Total time a person could hold elected office, or terms in a particular office, or cumulative terms. I mean, it's done different ways at different levels.
Yes.
And then the other issue that I would like to see addressed and discussed, again, under the mayor's, under the mayor's duties, whether the mayor is the presiding officer over the council meetings. And that has swung both ways, even in this term.
Okay? Anything else you just meant?
I mean, we can address it. Because we just had a three-way- Oh, sorry. We just had a three-way election in our city. And I believe that if we have a three-way race, we should have a runoff between the people that get the top two, the highest number of votes. I'm not against our mayor, but she only got 44% of the vote. And I feel like, and a mayor should at least get a majority of, in an election, of votes, just like any other election. That's something I would like to address.
Well, that should be addressed for all offices, not just the mayor.
I agree. Any kind of three-way that there's-
You need 50%?
Yeah. You need a majority. Yeah.
The city clerk is just looking at you with daggers.
Well, no, that, some cities, not unusual. If somebody gets more than, more than 50% of the vote in the primary, if you will, then they're the winner. If not, the top two go to a runoff.
We can go back, and we've had someone, I think it was 27% or 29% win.
Yeah.
That's, okay? Anything else? Yes, sir?
Yeah, I had a moment to speak to our city clerk in regards to the election process. And there were a couple grammatical and other timeframe issues that she has recognized in our charter. It's in regards to Section 30310 and 30311.
303-
10 and 30311. And she kindly provided me with the information she would suggest. And I just want to pass that on to you.
Yes, sir.
And if you need clarification, you can talk to Barbara, but it all made perfect sense to me as well.
I would like to understand that.
Here's the material. What was the number on that one, Lawrence?
I just passed it down, so I-
30310 and 30311. I think this is along the same lines. 307C1 vacancies. Again, depending on other discussions, any vacancy in the mayor's office, the deputy mayor shall serve as the mayor. But then, the provision is, the mayor becomes deputy mayor if they're not the presiding officer. So in the current case, if the mayor would resign, there's no clear lineage, who goes next? That's outlined in this.
Okay.
We need to outline what happens. Or just remove it for any reason. For whatever reason, I, you know, I'm just, I just noticed that. As I'm reading it, I notice, hey, there's a kind of loophole here that you don't think about. about until you start looking at it. All right, wait a minute.
Okay. Any other issues that we came here with before we get started? Well, I think we've covered that. Would everybody be good? We could just go ahead and get started now and knock out some of the, some of the charter. Good with everybody?
I think Section 309 says you were supposed to provide dinner tonight, Paul.
I am. I am providing dinner tonight. Just going to be at my house, so anybody who wants to, anybody who wants to drive, I shouldn't say that, my wife's had a task. All right, well, let's, let's just get to it then. Everybody's got their charter. Section 1.01, I don't imagine anybody has any issue with Section 1.01. Corporate limits of the city. No issues there, I can't imagine. Annexation, maybe extended, provided in Chapter 171, no issues there. See, we're already finished Article 1 and Article 2, look how quick that was. Article 3. Section 300, any issues there? "It is a fundamental value of the city of Oviedo Municipal Government that all city-elected officials, officers, and employees shall conduct themselves in harmony and cooperation with other city-elected officials, officers, employees, and the public, and shall maintain the highest ethical standards."
Or, I mean, what, what happens if they don't?
Wouldn't that fall into the other area where it does talk about?
Well, the, I, I'm not sure if you're being facetious or not, but the, this is a statement, this is a feel-good statement.
Thank you.
The, the, but that's okay to have that. Anytime somebody violates the charter, you can talk about the charter violation provisions, but I would tell you that you couldn't really say, well, you, you weren't harmonious, and therefore you, remember, our forefathers used to go out and have a duel with their guns, but they didn't agree on something, so. Section 301, City Council Powers and Composition. There shall be a city council consisting of five members, everybody good, still keep five members, of whom one shall be the mayor, and four shall be at-large council members having terms of office in accordance with Section 3.0302, and being elected in accordance with Section 3.0314, which we will discuss. The mayor and the four at-large council members shall be collectively referred to herein as the city council, council, or the council, city council members, and individually referred to as a member. The city council shall have all legislative powers of the city vested herein. Each member of the city council shall have one vote on all matters at which a vote is taken. Vacancies in office shall be filled in accordance with Section 3.07. Any issues there? Everybody's comfortable with the way votes are taken? Some cities have the mayor vote in the case of a tie, but we're all good with how we vote.
Any reason we have five?
Well, you don't want to have four.
It'd be tiebreaker.
Any provision for increasing that number? It was discussed in.
Putting it out, yeah, putting it out on the charter, the voters.
Pardon?
Putting it out to the voters. We can recommend a change to the charter, that's exactly, if you like.
How many residents are in the city, in the corporate limits of Oviedo approximately?
I think it's 40,000.
Forty thousand. And it, as we go through this process, when somebody says, hey, this is an area of concern, let's, let's talk about that. Qualifications. No person shall, yes, sir?
Okay, are we going to discuss that now, or since we're working through this?
Oh, if you want to discuss it, yes, sir, now's the time.
Are we going to just say this is, put a thumbtack in and come back to it?
No, I want to, I want to go through it and chronol, if it pleases all of you, I work for you, but if, what I think we ought to do is, as we get to an issue, a section, rather, that we want to discuss a change, doesn't mean we're going to propose a change, but we, any member wants to discuss it, let's discuss it now and get it done.
Okay. Well, I think that since Mr. White brought this up, he's got to.
No, my thought was, first, my first thought was, why do we have five to begin with? Nothing in state law.
No, sir.
Says you got to have.
No, sir. I will tell you.
And I know from being a HOA president that we have trouble getting quorums lots of times. I don't think I remember having that issue at the city council in the last few years. But there was sidebar discussion during the last election that, well, maybe we should just increase the number of council members, okay, to prevent anybody from getting a majority.
Based on what criteria would you do that?
I'm not saying we should.
Well, if you were, what would you use? Population?
No idea.
No idea.
Have we always been five?
Oh, I don't know. I assume that what, five is a pretty com, I will tell you, five is a very common number.
Okay.
As best I can recollect, looking at the history of Oviedo, it's always been five. It was at one point, five council members and the mayor. The mayor was a non-voting member, so there were six people that sat up there. The mayor participated in the discussion, but is not allowed to vote.
Why did we go back the other way?
Because it was, the mayor represented the community in all other aspects, and yet he had no vote, he or she had no vote in the policies and what he or she was representing. That was my position. I was the last mayor to have that ceremonial position as mayor.
We also changed the structure.
And then the charter changed in 91, so when I was, 92, excuse me, 02.
2002.
2002. 2002, it was changed, so when I was reelected in 2003, I assumed, I had a, one of the council members, District 5, was dropped, and, and that just was convenient, because that, when we alternated election years, that was the seat that corresponded with the mayor's election process. So they dropped that seat, and we elected four council members and the mayor, mayor having the fifth vote.
Thank you. Any, from your experience, any other cities in Florida, are we kind of in the same ballpark, five?
Yeah, I don't want to talk about the whole state of Florida, but five, if you had, I'll tell you this, if you had seven, I would think, wow, that's a 40,000-person city with a seven-member council, because it's more work, and the more council members, the more work it takes. You know, they have to represent, and they're all at-large here. So when you get into a bigger number, you would expect to have districts and not at-large, and I think that fundamentally changes the dynamic of the, of the council form of government. Five seems like the right number, and I'm not suggesting that you can't change it, or you should or shouldn't. Five is not an unusual number by any stretch.
Seminole County, which has, all the cities in Seminole County are similar size, I believe they're all five council members, unless that's changed in the last few years. There, I think Winter Springs still has a mayor that doesn't vote and has five council members, but I think that's the only one. Does anybody know different?
Nope, that's it.
Yeah.
But he has a veto power, too.
Well, they have veto power over ordinances, but not just, not just routine matters.
And Longwood doesn't elect their mayor, they choose from within.
That's correct, yeah.
So.
Good.
Section 3.02, and some of this is driven by statute, qualifications of office, live here 12 months, immediately preceding data qualification, council is the judge of the election, and qualifications, that's, I will tell you, that's pretty typical. Talks about a member being charged with conduct constituting grounds for forfeiture of office, shall be entitled to a public hearing on demand and how notice will be given. Hopefully, that's not something that you deal with very often. B, in the event that, after the qualifying period for office has closed and two or more candidates have qualified for an office, and a vacancy in candidacy or candidacies occurs as a result of the removal of a candidate or candidates from the ballot by reason of death, withdrawal, or removal of such that fewer than two candidates remain qualified for the election, a special qualifying period shall be established by resolution of the city council during which period additional candidates may qualify for office.
Can that be right up until, like, the end?
Well, you have some timeframe, when you say the end, I assume you mean the election. You have to get the names on the ballot, so it couldn't be like right up before the end? So there would have to be some limit on it, and it doesn't, it doesn't.
How would that be? Because I, I'm not going to, I'm going to say I don't, why would that, they have to be on the ballot, but this says they, they have to replace, they have to have a qualifying period.
Yeah, and so let's, let's break it down.
So, so the election, they, you know, whatever, six weeks ahead or eight, whatever the timeframe that they have the names for the ballot, and two weeks later, someone drops out for whatever reason. This says that there has to be a qualifying period. How do we reconcile that?
Yeah, you make a good point, that somebody drops out or having, something happens the day before the election.
Right, day, yeah, I mean, week before, day before, whatever.
So let, let me back, I'm going to answer your question, I understand your question, it's a fair one.
Well, because it'll be done by resolution of council.
Let me break it down and explain. The purpose, let's look at the purpose for it first. The purpose for this is, you know, two people in an election, a third person who may have been thinking about running is, you know, would be, do a good job, chooses not to get into the race, there's already two people, I don't want to be in the race. So as to give people a choi, give the voters a choice and make sure that there's a competitive race there, we have a provision for adding, having a special qualifying period to add additional candidates, allow additional people to qualify. The section is noticeably silent on how long that additional qualifying period is, when it has to begin, when it has to end. It only calls for a resolution, which is going to be adopted by the city council. And the reason it's, doesn't have any of those specifics is, to your point, Mr. Schenck, you were moving signs before, you are Mr. Schenck.
Yes, yeah, yeah.
Is because you necessarily are going to deal with situations like you're talking about, that you just don't know, you're just going to have to figure out what makes sense in that situation, but the charter is requiring that the commission figure it out, I commission, I apologize, the council, that the council figure it out and come up with something that works. So I would tell you that if you, so I'm going to, I'm going to retract something I said in my initial response to you, if you have a way that you can get the ballots printed and, and have the names, then it ought not to go right to the end. But this is necessarily silent on the particulars, because you just don't know what situation you're going to be confronted with. And so it may be that if someone drops out three days before, having been something worse happens, three days before the election, that they'll have an emergency meeting, adopt a resolution, allow for qualifying for two or, you know, two days before the election, and Madam Clerk will have to, you know, write in on a bunch of 40,000 ballots or so, being facetious. But it, it's going to have to be addressed. When that eventuality occurs, it's going to have to be addressed. I don't think you can write in here the limits on it. But to answer your question.
Why, why couldn't you write in that it's as of the date, that the supervisor election, you know, requires, you know, 48 hours before the supervisor election requires names?
You could, but why? And I'm not being obnoxious.
Oh, no, no, I understand. Well, again, there's a burden that's involved in running, anybody, you know, and, and you could go through, and then, for whatever reason, you know, whoever drops out for whatever reason, it, it provides an excess burden on whoever's running then, and has been in this race, to now have to, suddenly there is a, a big, huge change like that, that I don't think is, I keep, you, you started with the word reasonable, and that's how I always try to end up on the reasonable effort, and say, what would be a reasonable, two weeks before, three weeks before, a month before, what would be a reasonable way for both sides? Because again, I'd have to look at both sides and say, so I'm now the guy, somebody dropped out, I want, this person, I think it's, should always have a candidate, you know, you should have his candidate, and I was thinking, so I'm going to now run and put my name in it, what's reasonable to that candidate coming in? Is it two days worth of, is it a week worth of time period to put your name in and get your signatures and get this stuff, you know, is that reasonable? So I'm trying to see it from both ends, but I also say it's a burden either way.
Yes.
And it's a burden to the person that has already been running for what's going to be at that point probably six weeks since qualifying, somewhere six to eight weeks since qualifying, that kind of thing. Just something to think, I, I don't know what the answer is, and I'm not trying to throw the answer, I just, I think that's something, if, if there's an ability to think of something and try to look at that, and maybe come to a reasonableness, that's all.
I would only offer this thought for you, and this is ultimately up to all of you, is we have to be careful in charters, once we put a hard and fast rule, we're presented with the situation that we didn't think of, and now we're stuck with a rule because we can't change it. And so when we ask for something that is going to be, that is necessarily an atypical situation, I don't think you have people deciding to run and then dropping out at the last minute, it happens, but you don't have it routinely. And on some level, you've got to trust the folks that the people decided were best for the office, and to come up with what's reasonable in a given set of circumstances, as opposed to trying to figure out every situation in advance, and that, that's a tough one. That's just, as borne out by the fact that I answer your question, well, no, it can't go right up to two days before, but what if they drop out three days before?
No, no, and that's, it just, that's all I'm saying, it's just something that's always, I've looked at that one and gone, I don't know the reasonable answer, I don't know which one's the best, it's just, hey, if anybody has ideas, it's something to think about, that's all.
Anything there? I mean, certainly a fair comment, it's one that's left to the, to the city council and hoping that they'll do the right thing, then current city council will do the right thing. Yes, ma'am?
And am I reading this correctly, that this only, this only applies in the event that a candidate withdraws, that there would not be one candidate left to run unopposed? But if there was not a second candidate, a candidate can run unopposed if there was no one else that had qualified?
I'm going to, I'm going to read through it and answer your question, so. After the qualifying period has closed, obviously, if it hadn't closed yet, it's a non-issue, and two or more candidates have qualified for an office. So if qualifying has closed, and there's one person, let's see what happens, and then if there's two or more, is qualified for an office, a vacancy in candidacy or candidates occurs as a result of removal of a candidate or candidates from the ballot by reason of death, withdrawal, or removal, such that fewer than two candidates remain for, qualified for the election. So qualifying's closed, two or more have qualified. So it's only if two or more have qualified.
One drops out.
One drops out. Or is removed. Such that fewer than two candidates remain qualified for the election, a special qualifying period shall be established by resolution. So there had to have been two or more at the, at the, and the qualifying, and interestingly, what if one person, and it's, you know, it's a rock star, and nobody's going to run against her, and they qualify, and nobody would hear, think, run for this office, because you can't beat this person, they're unbeatable. And that, that person drops out after qualifying is closed, and there'd be 30, 30 people that would have ran for office. This section doesn't speak to that.
Yeah. Can I, you, you brought something up, qualified. When do you qual, when do you become qualified for this? I know we're going to get to that further on, probably.
Yes.
Is how do you qualify?
You come in, and you come to the clerk, and you?
Okay, when are you officially qualified?
I'll have to look at.
Yeah, that's, that's another thought to me, is, well, if you're qualified, if you're qualified before, there's a qualifying period of a week?
Yep.
Is that the official qualifying period? And you're not officially qualified until that week.
Well, no, you qualify, yes, you can't qualify before the week starts, you can qualify on the first day or the last day.
Well, you can get all your signatures, and you do all your stuff, open your account, get all your signatures, and put all your paperwork in, and have everything done, you can accept money, you can start running for election.
Sure.
Are you qualified?
No, you're not qualified until a qualifying period begins.
Till a qualifying period begins.
You agree.
That's it, I'm just making sure of that, okay.
Yeah. So it's an interesting, to your, I, I'm not sure now that I've answered your question, yes. The way this is written, I read it to be only, there had to have been at least two candidates who qualified at the beginning of the, or at the end of the qualifying period. who qualified at the beginning of the, or at the end of the qualifying period.
And then one?
My point was, if I'm reading it correctly, if only one person runs, you can run unopposed.
Yes, ma'am.
However, if there were two people and one dropped out, then you cannot run unopposed, they have to lengthen the qualifying period in order for someone else to come and run against you.
Yes.
Interesting concept.
What's more interesting, well, I won't say it's more interesting, also interesting to me, is that if it's one person running unopposed, and I use my hypothetical, if someone's just so electable that no one thought to run against them, and they drop out, or heaven forbid, you know, having a, have an accident and can't run, then nobody's running for that, it's an empty position.
They would have to open up the qualifying period again?
This, this doesn't require it here, it's interesting.
Does the Florida statute mention the?
I'm going to, I'm going to.
Address it?
I'm going to make a note, I'll come back to you on that, I don't, I've never seen that before. There may be. David, any, I, I'm not aware of it. I'm going to, I'm going to have to look at it, will you give me a minute to make a note?
Sure. Yeah, and technically, I think the extending, the qualification period would be reopened.
Correct.
Well, it would be a special qualifying period according to this, and by resolution of the council.
Yeah.
So that the one person who was left could not run unopposed.
Well, they could if nobody else decided to step up, but you have to reopen, yes, you're right.
Right.
A chance.
Have to give them a chance.
So it's interesting that we have that little thing in there for no opposition, I mean, for opposition, but not if only one person had qualified. We let people run unopposed all the time.
And it's okay to run unopposed.
It's awesome.
But what, but under this, but what happens if that person goes away? Now, now you've got a four-member council, and you've really got a problem.
And what this has also been a potential, or have some dovetail into, is the bit about 50% to win, 50% of the vote to win, when we get to that discussion.
Yeah, sure. Okay.
So with your scenario of the rock star who drops dead, would that be, would that then be treated as a vacancy in the, in the council, and then treatable by section 3.07?
Non-vacant.
It's not a vac, well, there would be a vacant position.
It wouldn't be vacant until after the current member's term ends, whenever that is following the election, then there would be a vacancy on the day that they would be taking office, and we'll look at how that gets filled, but that seems an odd result when you're going to have an election anyways, and if there were two people, you would have done a special qualifying period, so, but that just seems interesting. All elections of the city and related election activities shall be implemented in accordance with the provisions of state law, set forth in the Florida Election Code. Any conflict between the mandatory provisions of state law, or any provisions of this charter or in ordinance of the city shall be resolved in favor of the provision of state law, obviously. B, to the extent not preempted by state law, the city council may enact ordinances or resolutions as appropriate, providing for the procedures relating to city elections, such as election precincts, polling places, inspectors, clerks, providing notices of the election by publication and other means, the canvassing of returns, the certification of election results, ballots, nominating petitions, and the examination of nominating petitions. C, whenever practicable and in the best interest of the city, the city council may enter intergovernmental agreements with Seminole County Supervisor of Elections to implement the election processes of the city. D, I'm just going through them because I'm assuming, nobody has any comments. D, qualifying for all regular city council member elections will occur for a five-day period, which shall be Monday through Friday of the week, which is two weeks prior to the state primary election date, beginning at 8:00 a.m. on Monday and ending at noon on Friday of said week, provided however that a person in line to qualify at the city clerk's office at noon on said Friday shall be entitled to submit qualifying papers to the city clerk. The city clerk may promulgate administrative rules to implement the provisions of this section.
Let me just ask the clerk a quick question. Barbara, has that ever presented any problems to you, to your office? That five-day period, Monday through Friday?
Or the timing of it?
We never would have a holiday, I suppose it would call.
Change the primary.
Okay, okay.
Is there a state primary during the off years?
No.
Yeah, I'd never do.
Great.
I don't think there is, is there?
There's a date though that's set.
Oh, a state, yeah, for state house and representatives.
There's a date.
In the odd years?
On the odd numbered year.
They're the even years.
No, they're even years, that's a gubernatorial.
Nobody's asking, on the odd years.
I don't think on the odd years there is.
No, even years.
So on the even, or on the odd years, the city election is, is internal, the city clerk runs it.
What can you?
That's why she has to have a runoff after that, and she's done twice the work.
Mr. White, did you?
Well, it just, then this, this clause here, about two weeks prior to the state primary, only applies to even years.
Correct.
Not the odd years, I don't know what the culmination date is for the odd year.
I understand your comment.
Yep. So what would probably be reasonable is to add a comment about when state or higher elections aren't being conducted, the city establishes their own schedule.
Right.
Now, do you have elections in both odd and even number years, the way it works, that we haven't gotten there yet?
Yes.
We haven't gotten there, but I want to talk about that.
Two-year terms.
Okay. But they're staggered, so we, well, that's a question.
How do we set it now? How is it set like in this last election? Barbara, what do you know about the date for set, was the city council just set the dates for qualifying?
Where'd you pick the day that was closest to the year before?
The city.
Yeah.
I figured out what the primary, what the date would be for a primary if the county was having one.
Okay. I mean, it's basically the same, it's the first Tuesday, you know, whatever, and whatever month.
Guidelines, start by the county.
We are, 3.03, ma'am, I'm sorry.
I just said, are we at, are we 3.03 yet?
I was going to just run over 3.03.01. All qualifications and elections for the office of city council should be nonpartisan, we're all good with that. 3.03.02, election in terms. The regular or general election of the city council members shall be held on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in November, in the manner provided in Article III of this charter. City council members shall hold office for a term of two years, or until their successors are elected and certified. City council members shall take office upon the first regularly scheduled city council meeting in December following their election. City elections and registration procedures shall be held in accordance with the provisions of Florida statutes. We're there.
So if, if we go to four-year, we decide as a group that that's the way to go, I would personally like to see not an odd cycle in between a general election cycle, I would like to be, have the city election at a general election every four-year cycle. In other words, instead of us having staggered election periods in between, like a 2020 election, not have like a 2019 like we just had.
Sure, can I ask a question?
Yes.
Just want to make sure, I, I may have heard you say this, was it, you're suggesting, obviously you don't want to have it in an odd numbered year, you'd like to have it at every other even year, but you weren't suggesting that there'd be one election where everybody, the entire council gets elected, or maybe you were?
Well, if we go to four terms, we would maybe have for a period of time some staggered terms in there.
What I'm just getting at, because I heard you make the comment, would you propose to have in the future, all five of your city council members get elected at the same night and not stagger the terms?
I, I would like everybody to be on the same election cycle.
That is, I will, it's your prerogative, I'm not going to provide you my opinions on it, I will tell you, in my limited spare of experience here in East Central Florida, it is typical to stagger the terms.
Okay.
We do it in not-for-profit organizations, you know, state boards that were appointed, stagger, and.
But that just keeps it fresh and?
Well, there's continuity.
Yeah.
You know, you turn, there's some, there's some value to institutional experience, we did this last year because of this, and we told them, and when nobody was there, nobody remembers it, you, you lose that continuity. You know, imagine that you had a, a development project going through the works, and it's, you know, it's a long one, because it was a comprehensive plan, I don't know if you are with that, but you've got, you've got these projects that will, will literally take, you know, in some cases, two years to move through the process.
Yeah.
And it starts at one place, and when it gets finally approved, it's another project, and it may be that you've had an election, but there's some people who are there and remember and kind of help guide the process and remind other, their, their other members of how this has gotten to where it is, and if you've got five new people, what, this is a terrible idea.
Well, that's true, that's a good point.
So I think that it's, it's sort of that continuity, that institutional continuity that is the, the reason for staggering, it's not to say you can't.
But there again, that would be a good point, to go to four-year terms instead of two-year terms, just because like you're saying, some of these developmental processes can be very, very lengthy.
So let's break this down, let's, let's start with the length of terms, you've identified you like to see a four-year term versus a two-year term. Show of hands, if you don't mind me asking this, who else is interested in, in increasing the term of office? Okay, and it's not a vote, you're not bound by this, I'm just trying to see if there's some appetite.
Now, is this a question, increasing it to four years, or just increasing it?
Well, let's start with increasing it. Okay? So by show of hands, when it's four years, there were about five or six of you, and Mr. Walters adds when it's just increasing. Is that to more than four, or less than four?
Well, I have been painfully involved with this question for many years, and there is some very adamant feelings out in the community. There are many that say two years is too, not often enough, or is, is too long, and then there's some of us that have served in office that say four years is about right. So some people will say, well, let's compromise at three years. My question to you would be, is, could this be on a ballot, this committee put it forward that'd be on the ballot as a multiple choice question?
No, sir. No, sir.
You cannot do, why not?
You have to have a, and it's a yes, no, approve it or don't approve it.
Yeah.
You can't put it out there, you want to keep it the way it is, or?
You could do, you could theoretically do a straw ballot, and then come back the following year and do a charter amendment.
No.
But no, it has to be.
Then that would get too painful, I would have put, Barbara.
It's a yes, it's a yes, no, it has to be a yes, no vote.
Okay.
So there's, let me ask, there were, I think I counted out of five or six that were in favor of increasing.
Or increasing, yeah.
Increasing, so I'm not, let's, let's just, for the purpose of this discussion, four years. Of those that did not raise their hand, are you opposed and think it ought to stay at two? Is there anyone who didn't raise their hand that just doesn't care one way or the other?
I'd like to know what you're thinking, when, those of you who want to go to the four-year, just, just to let me know, tell me, why do you think going four years is better than having the two-year?
I can tell you, I've been in that position. I think two years is too short, because as soon as you get into office, you're right away, you have not even a full year before you're running for office again, or you're having to consider running for office again. As an example, current mayor is already announced, she's running for reelection.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it has gotten, two years is a real treadmill set at a high pace. Because you, you're, every other summer is lost.
I agree.
Every other summer is lost.
Ms. Bearas will, if I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, you did, thank you, I agree, Janet, having served on council, while I attended council meetings regularly, and I felt very informed, when I got up there, I realized how uninformed I really was. So it takes quite a while, for me, someone who understood what a comprehensive plan was, and what it does, and how you do it, to garner the information from the legislative process. And so Tom is right, by the time you are getting a little bit comfortable with legislating and governing, people are saying, I'm going to run against you, or are you going to run? And your mind begins to immediately switch to election time. To take Bed's point, some of the projects that Tom and I went through were completed long after we were off council. And so to bring in new blood for, without continuity, could be detrimental to our city. So I'm in favor of four years.
I, I'm in favor for the same reason, I mean, the Oviedo on the Park Project was a 30-year project, really, from start to finish, and you get people in two-year cycles, and Tom, you lived through all that, it's, it's a lot. Like you said, the mayor has already filed, she's going to run again, she's opened up her campaign, but any elected official that for two years, they're going to do the same thing. So I just feel like it gives continuity to our government, they're not always looking to get reelected, it's a short cycle, and I just feel like we, the community has grown so much, we're not a small town anymore, we're, we're a big city now, and there's a lot more information out there for our council members to absorb than there was 30 years ago. And I just feel like a four-year term just better serves the, the community, we are going to have more educated council members over a longer period of time, and I just feel like it's the way to go. Now, if the rest of the group isn't for it, but.
Mr., I can't read it.
Voorhees.
Mr. Voorhees.
I'm, I've never run for office, I've never been in office, and I can kind of understand where those of you that have been in office, your concerns. But as a voter, my concern is, if we get a bad apple in there, I don't want to be stuck with a bad apple for four years. So, but I also understand that good apples, you know, once they've established themselves in the eyes of the community as good apples, maybe they deserve a longer period of, of term. So, so the, the community can have the option of removing somebody after two years if we don't like them, but then if somebody proves themselves to the community, yeah, maybe we give them a four-year term.
When you, are you speaking euphemistically, give them a four-year term by electing them again?
No, no, allow them, that the next election would be, of course, they're not.
It's either, it's either a two-year term, or three-year term, or four-year term, you can't, the term is the term.
Well, then I, I would want to stick with two-year, because I, I would be afraid of having a, a bad apple.
Mr. Nasser?
If I may say, my thought is, if we increase the, the term to four years, we have to be mindful that maybe we should put a term limit, because four, and most people run for second term and sometimes third term, so if there's no term limit, then they'll be there for a long time. So we should be mindful that if we increase to four years, we should very carefully think about the term.
I, I agree with Sam, and that is the answer to your question, sir, is, you have to put the term limits on it so that, you know, that they don't go on forever.
But I, I think Darrell's, actually, it's the exact opposite. I think, again, we're talking, we're overlapping issues, I'll go back.
I'll go back to the four-year first and say, perfect world, I'm all in for four years. Four years, I served, it's four years, again, you need time to ramp up, it gives you the opportunity to see projects, things, just everything through a little bit. It puts us on the cycles, that lessens the cost if you stagger it for the city, so we're in the gubernatorial and presidential elections, so our cost basis goes down, it also increases the number of voters. You're talking 18,000 registered voters, voting versus 4,000, 5,000 registered voters in an off-year. So it kind of puts the plane the same in that respect. Again, perfect world, some of us have been here, lived through it, the vote went, two times this one out to voters drastically poorly, and it was rejected both times. That's why people talk three and term limits. They try to put the package together to make it work. I think, first, they're two different issues. They're drastically two different issues. If you want two or four years, you're talking about service and length of service. If you have issues with people serving and length of time they serve, whole different issue, in my opinion, but I'll go with Dale and say, there is a methodology, vote him out, you may not like the person that's in there, but that's just your opinion, it seems the majority is not with you on that case. And there are numerous people, not here, you can go nationwide, and everybody can think of a person, you go, how did they ever elect X in these, again, Marion Barry's my first thought, I always go to Marion Barry, go, how could you ever reelect Marion Barry after he serves time for cocaine? How do you reelect him? God bless, they did, and that's the majority. With term limits, I don't like that, because if somebody's really good at what they do, I want them in there forever.
So let me, let me do this. I'm going to make a note on the term limits. There, it's not a majority, but we're not voting right now, but there's certainly a group of you that have an interest in considering increasing from two to four years, or increasing the term limits. So, I'm going to...
Length. You said term limits.
Yeah, I misspoke, increase the term of office to four years.
I would suggest to you that this is the single most prickly topic that we will discuss, and that we'll be putting forth to the voters.
Yeah.
This is, this has been going on, I was elected in 2001, and in that first term, it was already being discussed, and it got ramped up over the years, and there's several people that are adamant that two years, we want to keep the leash short. From those that want to serve, there's the reflection that, I don't want to go in there for two years and have to do it all over again. You get tired.
Yeah.
And so you, therefore, some good people stay away, because the feeling is, is, well, I've always, I've already got this hammer over my head as soon as I get elected and get in the service. So what I might ask you to do, sir, is, could you go to the League of Cities, or whatever other source documents you might have, and see what cities of similar population do as far as, you know, how many cities have two-year terms, how many cities have four-year terms, how many cities have three-year terms?
I don't mind doing it. My only, and I'm thinking out loud, so bear with me, my only concern is, what I don't want to do is, in any way, shape, or form, interject my opinions into this process.
Just bring the data.
There was a study, there was a study done in 2006.
Yeah.
Nationwide.
So, I'm going to ask the manager, is that something that you all can provide? They're looking for some data, Mr. White indicated there was a study done by the League of Cities or otherwise, in terms of how many cities with elections have two-year terms, four-year terms, or some other term?
Fifty-fifty.
It's fifty-fifty?
Nationwide.
I have no idea.
I think it's a good idea to get the exact numbers, but I have looked it up, and the most common length of term is four years, about forty percent, a little over forty percent of municipalities elect for four years, the next most common is three years.
Okay.
But, again, it's worth getting the examples.
I don't mind, I don't mind doing it, you're paying me to do it, so, I'm just a little concerned about advocating any particular position to you.
No, I don't want you to advocate it, I just want you to bring the wrong, just...
I'll look and see what I can find, I won't promise you that I'll find, but...
It's going to be, it supports, if you have numbers, it supports one position versus another, or helps, and support it.
Understood.
Forty percent of the cities could be dead wrong.
Yeah, I just don't want to be in a position of supporting a position or another, that's my only consternation about bringing it to you.
But you did ask in the beginning, and it didn't come to my mind, but what we, I personally have seen feedback on social media about low voter turnout, and I have the position that if you're interested in voting, you're going to go vote, the people that don't, don't. But I do think getting, adjusting the cycle, maybe going to four-year terms, I mean, a lot of people go, I didn't even know there was an election, believe it or not, in a city our size nowadays. So, that's just another viewpoint.
Is there not a way to adjust the cycle where that it's not four-year terms, but it is consistent with the presidential quadrennial and the gubernatorial race, so that it would be an even number of years every two years?
Yeah.
That would certainly increase the turnout. I have a question for the city manager, may I ask a question?
Sure, sure, well, if he says so.
Mr. Cobb, do you know, right off the top, the cities in Seminole County, how many of them have four-year terms on their councils? I can't think of one, it's a reason I'm laying it on you.
I believe Winter Springs does.
Oh, did it?
I believe, and I think Sanford may, and possibly Altamont. But, I mean, getting back to, I mean, we can, we'll definitely help try to find, you know, as many cities in Florida as we can.
Yeah, I just don't want to be in a position of providing information that advocates that one is better than the other, because I'm a facilitator, I'm trying to respect that role.
No, I'm not asking whether it's better or not, I'm asking you to go to the League of Cities.
Mr. Walters, let me, let me stop there. I'm going to ask the city administration to provide the information that the committee has requested, and what that information is, and Mr. White referred to a study that had been, do you know who did that study? Was it a nationwide study?
The League of Cities.
Florida League of Cities, okay. At least, that did a study on length of office, so that may be a very simple thing to do, and I might go home tonight, look it up, and send it to Mr. Cobb. Yes, sir.
Separate from the idea of length of term, I think an issue you brought up earlier, as far as continuity, is there a way to have four-year terms where you're not reelecting the entire council every four years?
Oh, absolutely.
How would that work?
You just stagger.
Three, in other words... Three in presidential year, two in gubernatorial year.
Right.
Okay.
The controversy becomes which seats get chosen the first time around, that can be a little delicate.
You're going to, if you extend the term of office, somebody who's in office, well, not necessarily you could, you could, it started new elections.
It's usually the easiest way, somebody gets an extra year, you get, two or three people get an extra year.
We had that in one city, and that was the issue, who gets the extra time?
But the idea here is that we're coming as a group to come up with, you know, suggestions to the charter, and then it goes out to be voted on by...
No, sir.
So if we're saying, by majority, we say four, we're not changing it here, what we're saying, we're going to put it out there for everybody to vote on it.
You're going to put it to the city commission to vote on whether, whether they want to send it out to the voters. The idea procedurally is, I'm hoping, that when we get to the end of this process, we'll have a very clear charter amendment, let's just assume it was four years, four years, staggered terms, whatever it is, that you all will vote to recommend, or the majority of you may vote not to recommend it. If you vote to recommend it, it would go to the city commission as a formal recommendation from this body, with the specific text of what you recommend. Mr. Nasser?
I think I have a feeling that most people would like to see four-year in office and a two-year term, that's my personal view, but I think there's a lot of support for that, so I suggest this for the committee to consider.
Well, I will bring back, I'm going to bring back an item for your consideration of an increase in the length of term of office. I think there's enough of you that have an interest in it, may not, a majority of you may not ultimately vote for it, but we're going to, we're going to bring it back. All right? Anything else on that? 3.03, 3.03.
Well, is this, would this be the place to also then do term limits, or no?
Let's get there.
Okay, I didn't know if that was, like, in that spot, that's all.
Okay. Well, you have no term limits.
Correct, that's why I said, it's nowhere in here, so...
Let's do it now.
Where else would we address it?
That's a good question. The, so let's talk about term limits. I've already heard that some folks would be in favor, well, is anybody in favor of term limits? We've got, people are in favor of term limits. We want to discuss it, anybody on the fence about term limits? Ms. Behrswill?
I'm in favor of term limits as long as we increase the length of service.
Yeah.
When you say length of service?
So, three or four years, term of office, then, three or four years, then I'm in favor of term limits.
Okay, and then, just so I'm clear, get your thinking, if somebody had to run every two years, and they wanted to subject themselves to that and run 20 times for the next 40 years, you're okay with that, but if they're running, if they only have to run once every four years, they can't stay in office for 40 years, they need to stay in office less time?
I'm open to hear everything, but that's my initial thought.
Okay, I got it, just wanted to make sure I understood it. I'm not suggesting that's a bad idea, I'm just making sure I understand. For those that are in favor, anyone, can I see those folks, by show of hands, who were in favor of term, imposing term limits? So, for those that are in favor of imposing, and I'm just going to start here and go around the table, how much time?
Well, if we go to four-year terms, I would be okay with two terms, two four-year terms.
So you, eight years, though, is a number, whether it's four, two years, or two fours, you're at eight years. Anybody else here that was in favor of term limits? Mr. White, I think you were in favor of term limits, eight years.
Yeah, I'd say two, but I would like to somehow put a proviso in there that if you have a break in service, well, come back, and be voted back in.
Okay.
Let's come back to Ms. Evans, do you care, do you care, you know, if they, if they do eight years, let's assume that's number.
I mean, that's not a hard number for me.
Understood.
I mean, but you get 30, 40 years, I mean, that, honestly, that's, it's a number in there for term limits.
Understand, I'm just using this as a number for the, call it 12 years, call it 20 years.
Yeah.
Whatever the number is, do you think it ought to be, this is as long as you can ever serve in your life?
No.
Or you can have a break in service and then come back?
Yeah, if somebody wants, is willing to serve our community, and they want to do that, I'm fine with that.
So as long as there's a break in service, they come back?
Yep.
There's no cap, just break, term limit, break in service, let's...
How long is the break?
One election cycle.
One election?
One election cycle?
Yeah. Mr. White, are you of a like mind? Who else going around the room was in favor of term limits? Mr. Nasser, where are you in terms of, one, what do you think is the right amount of time?
I think two terms.
Two, two-year terms?
Four years.
So eight years, you like eight years, and what about a break in service? Would you allow someone to come back after a break in service?
I think that would be all right.
Okay. Ms. Townsend?
I would be in favor of eight years of however that is accumulated by length of terms, with no return.
I forget, over here, who was the next person that was in favor of term limits? Mr. Walters?
Eight years of continuous service with the allowance to return after a break, one election cycle.
And then, was anyone, you gentlemen? All right, I'm going to, there's enough of you that are interested in it, again, may not pass, but it sounds like there's an interest in having a term limit, there's at least some interest in having a term limit of about eight years, and that most of you are okay with serving indefinitely, so long as you have breaks in service along the way. Anything else on that issue? Do we need to take a break? I'm fine, does anyone here need to take a break?
So we're not speaking up, those of us who are against term limits aren't making an argument now.
We certainly can, I mean, we certainly can.
Oh, I agree with Mr. Voorhees, it's undemocratic, you know, give the market the chance to vote people in and vote people out.
All right, I am too, voters can elect who they like.
And procedurally, we will, when I bring these back, I assume there's going to be some robust debate before votes are taken, but I'm going to, I'm trying to identify the places where there are issues, I need to do a little work to make sure I give you a properly crafted language, and I can't do it sitting here with pen and pen, listening to everybody. So, now, certainly a time to talk about it both ways, I don't mean to cut that off in any way, shape, or form, but I imagine, our last meeting, our last two meetings, we'll have some robust debate on each of the issues.
Could I provide something for, food for thought? Again, this has been a painful subject for many years for me, I've sat through it, I will tell you right now, is, perfect world, as Mr. Schenk said, I agree with you, let the market bear, whatever, reelection. I will tell you right now, if you have any interest in longer than two-year terms, that the only way the populace of this city is going to agree to anything longer than a two-year term is with limits. I guess, I mean, I've been out there enough, I've been to enough meetings, I've been in town halls, I've been the whipping boy with this topic, and people don't want to give, they want to do, as Dale over there said, they want to be able to, okay, you've got two years, or I don't like giving a vote out, that's great, if that's your desire, but if you want to get a person in, if you want to entice good people to run for office, and they say, I am not going to run for two years, and then have to run again for two years, you're going to have to put term limits on it. If you want to get, if you want four years, you're going to have to have term limits, if you want to suppress it to two years, leave it wide open, that way people can vote you in and out.
Let me ask this question, of the people who currently are not, not raised their hand, that they're in favor of term limits, I didn't, I didn't correlate this in my notes, of those that are in, not in favor of term limits, so it's only people that are not in favor of term limits, are you in favor of increasing, are there any of you that are in favor of increasing to a four-year term?
Yes, I don't have a problem with it.
I have no problem with it. Again, I think there's separate issues.
Understood, I'm just, I'm just trying to get a...
And so what I'm saying to Randy here, is if you want four-year terms, which I agree with, you need to put some sort of limits on it, because that will not pass, that will not pass on a ballot.
But then it doesn't pass, that's just the way, I mean, I don't disagree with you, I'm not going to disagree with that exact comment, but then, it doesn't pass. It's the packaging, listen, like you also know, packaging in the previous got big trouble, that, that's what caused some of the problems, is putting things together...
That's where I got...
That naturally didn't, that didn't naturally occur together, or trying to do that. And that's why I said, again, I think they're two separate issues, if you want four years, I'm all for it, if you want four years on the preside, you know, that provision is only, well, you have to limit to two four-year terms, I'm no way for that.
Yeah, and they will be presented as two separate items, Mr. Walters, I understand your concern that one has to follow the next if you expect it to get approved, but that's not my, certainly not my issue.
Well, and I can compromise on one term or the other, like, if it's four years, without term limits, I'm okay with that. Like I said, it's not a hard number for me, how, what, how many years somebody serves, if someone's willing to serve, but I do think the city would be better served with four-year terms.
Good.
Okay.
If you take that to its conclusion, you put two items on the ballot, one is the term length, four years, or two, whatever, and the other is term limits. You could win the first one, lose the second one.
You could.
And a good man will be kicked out of office after four years with no opportunity to run again. So, you've cut your, cut your legs off.
Say, I understand that you could, people could approve term limits but not include the length of term, but if it were eight years, it would be four, two-year, reelected.
No, that's not what I said. I said, everybody votes for a four-year term.
Okay.
The second item is term limits, one, two, whatever. If you vote for a four-year term and you deny term limits, you keep it to one, you could have a great mayor in there and he can only serve four years. He wouldn't be able.
If they voted for not for the four-year terms.
I don't think anybody's saying a one-year term, it just stays the same, that there is no term limit. It doesn't revert to.
Yeah, so, so, Mr., oh, go ahead, please.
I was gonna say, his point is, I think, they don't vote in the four-year term, but they vote in the term limit. So, now you can only.
That's what I thought originally.
That's what I think.
Right, yeah, yeah.
You got permutations there that.
You could theoretically have, have the electorate say, we want term limits, but your term limits, and we, we, we'll, let's talk about this for a moment. I envision that when you talk about term limits, it would be an amount of time in office. It would be divisible either, that would be divisible by four years if you were gonna propose a four-year term.
No, I think you need to get your term, you need to get your terminology right. You have term length, term limits, and service limits, because you could have 12 years of service, split up into three pieces.
Understood. No, I understand your point, it's well taken. And you make the point, the point is valid, that you could, you could vote in a term limit, which you don't have now, and not increase the length of those terms.
Okay, I'm gonna go back to what I said before, that you said there's no way in hell it could happen. Why can't we, because I, representatives, I think, are this way, that their first time elected, they're only in for a short number of years, and then the second time, if they get reelected, it's extended out longer than that, and I think longer than that, right?
When you say you're, you mean, when you say you're, you mean state representatives?
I think you, national.
Ooh.
Congress is two-year.
Congress is always two years?
Oh, yes.
Yeah, and it's extended as what?
Six.
But the state has term limits, right?
Yes.
Yes.
And these are, three, eight years?
Eight, eight years.
Eight years.
Alright, sorry.
I can't get into it too.
I'm not an advocate of term limits myself. I think the electoral process kind of takes care of itself. Wasn't a real advocate of extending the timeframe, I would entertain the idea. I think I probably would lean a little more towards a three-year window as opposed to a four, but for the purpose of discussion, I don't mind discussing it further.
Okay, and to Mr. White's point, if it's a, if it's a, if we're gonna have two issues on an agenda, and it's going to be a term limit, and we're also discussing the length of term, everybody is contemplating, we're okay with term limits so long as we, everybody has in their head a, an amount of time, a service limit, to use your point, your term. That's what it sounds like to be the consensus.
Here's a continuous service.
Yeah, okay.
Can I throw one more little thing out there? And I don't even know if it even needs to be addressed. We talk about continuous service in a position, and then a break, and be able to be reelected. Hypothetically, a person sits two years representing a district, two terms, four years, four years, eight years as a district, can they then immediately turn around on the next election, run for mayor? It's a different position, but it's still part of the city council. I don't have a preference, I'm just saying, it may, depending upon how we resolve all this, that's another thing we may need to at least describe and identify.
I think from listening to the comments, your drawers would be, no, whatever your push is, position is up here, there's a break in service after some number of years.
That's.
Those that advocate, those that advocate for break in service.
And as I spoke, that the way it would be, have to be addressed, is the mayor is a member of council, is that you can only have eight continuous years on council without a break.
Got it.
Okay. Most of them, like the House, the state, they have maximum number of years. They don't do, it's continue, whether it's continuous or not.
Uh, don't they move from state representative to state senate?
Yes, of course they do, but again, in each place, in House, then they move to senate. So, it's that. I'll throw, because in other places don't have this, so I resign with two weeks left.
With what?
I brought, I resign with two, two weeks left in my, in my service. Is it continuous or not continuous? This has happened in other places. I'll resign.
It would have to be identified as continuous terms of office.
And that's what I'm saying, it's how it's written, is the wordsmithing it exactly, because it's continuous terms of office, and then, again, but that relates to your point of, well, is the office the district too? Again, it's just, a lot of wording that, it's just in the wording and in the total, where you say it's total of eight years continuous or eight years total, most of them are written as a total year, not allowed to come back in, and come back in. Most of them are, you serve eight years in that position.
For any portion thereof.
That, yeah, that position is now, you are done, most of them, you're done, you can't come back to that position, I agree. So, that's what I'm just saying, it's a, for those that are saying, well, you can come back, you have to wordsmith that path very carefully, and it has to, I'm sure it's been done somewhere.
But you can define the amount of time the break has to be.
Total, and define how much the time, that's what I'm saying, there's, it's just a matter of wordsmithing and all, but.
I just have a quick question, so, along what you're saying, Steve, so then, say that you were, say you were city council for eight years, and then you decided that you took a break, and then you could run for mayor?
Yeah, that's what he said. Again, depending on, depending what the outcome would be of.
Okay.
And actually, if you took a break, you'd even come back and run for?
Come back and run for city council.
Right, right, I see.
So, in terms of term definition, you got term lengths, term limits, length of service, and what I'll call movement between.
Continuity time.
Movement between ballots, and you're saying, movement between ballots is okay, we don't care, it's okay if you serve your term and term limits under one billlet, and then get, run for office in a different bill, or in our case, a different group, or mayor.
No, he, they were suggesting that it didn't matter whether you were the mayor or a council member, they're all part of the council, that there needs to break, be a break in service, and that the, there's a bunch of you, I can't say the majority, let me, let me, I'm a linear thinker, so, and that they would have a maximum amount of time that somebody would serve regardless of what the term, length of term is, I'm gonna use eight years for just a walking around number, and then there must be a break in service, which is a minimum, again, walking around number of two years before you could return to the same body. And I realize that you all don't agree on all of that, but that's, seems to be what I'm hearing.
But you've described it well.
I question whether, and this is an academic point.
Yeah, oh, I love academic.
I can't, I can't give it up. If you quit with two weeks left in the term, how did you then qual, how then would you qualify for?
Oh, I'll just put a number, say it was six weeks out, right before, you know, you resign right before qualification for that. I'm just, I use two weeks as a number, but you resign right before qualification, it's not, again, it depends on the wording, if it's not worded the right way.
I made a note.
Yeah.
Your point's taken. Okay.
And again, I'm against it all, so, term limits in every sense.
Mr. White, I.
Because the other thing is, we're a local, and that's how I really feel, is again, it's, if, if people want to serve, you, you said this, and then you kind of contradicted when you, and I love Beth, so I'm not, you know, I know she'll take this right, you contradict by, let people serve, the people who want to serve here, but then there's a term limit. And it's like, yeah, there's people who want to serve, and if they get elected, then that's who should serve, and that's, that's the way it is. And that's how I really feel, is if they're elected, that's, they're elected, the people decided, whether it's, and even now, whether you say it's 5,000 or 19,000 decided, that's the election, that's the results, and that's where you go with it. So, I believe that process, where, again, I like the four-year terms overall, but that's the process, to get rid of, it's the same process to get rid of them.
Well, the four-year terms are more important to me than really the other, but.
Mr. White, I interrupted you, so you were in a, okay. Anything else on that?
Yeah, can I just, an apology to those of you who haven't been elected officials, Steve and I talk about these things, we've been there, we've seen, we've seen it, and it sounds petty, but let me tell you, there are people who game the system.
Yeah, oh, sure.
Yeah, and we, we also know what, painfully know what's out there in the community, as far as what, which way the wind blows.
So, let's go to 3.03.03, are we good with tack on that one before we, while we're just going on? A special municipal election for the purpose of electing any elective officer to fill a vacancy or vacancies in any such office on account of death, removal, resignation, or other cause, shall be held in the same manner as a regular election. The mayor shall call the special municipal election by proclamation. Such proclamation shall specify the length of the unexpired term or terms to be filled, and the time of taking office until their successor is elected in regular municipal elections shall take office. So, here, anytime there's a vacancy, there's going to be an election, so, you know, and with a, especially with a current two-year term, somebody could have four months left, and under the language of this, you've got to hold a special election. I'm sure the clerk loves this, but. Any, any concerns with that?
I have some concern. I think if it is less than six months left in the term, maybe it's not worth having an election. It should be just, the mayor or the council can appoint somebody to fill that vacancy for the rest of the term, and then, election will be automatically.
Well, interestingly, to your point, you use six months, but what if, what if there were 30 days left in the term? I mean, literally, this requires a special election, regardless of the amount of time. I don't think you could do it as a practical matter if that were little, there were that little time left.
Is it possible to revise that to say may instead of shall?
I would not put something in your charter that is discretionary, I mean, when you're putting the details on how you do something, you can leave it to the reasonable discretion of the, of the elected body. But if you're going to make a change there, I would define very specifically, if there's more than X amount of time, a special election shall be held within X amount of time, X amount of time after the vacancy.
This is addressed in 3.07.
It's further on, because it's happening.
Yeah.
That's for a position not on the county.
See, letter, see, number two, specify six months remaining in office.
Yeah, which is, was pretty typical.
Yeah. Recall this coming up before, and this was where the council and the manager referenced that.
I will say to you then, we'll come to that section, thank you, if, since it's, since it's answered, you want to put as, as few, you don't want to put too many things out to the voters in a, in a referendum for charter changes, I think you're messing with stuff, and there's, will be concern.
I'm just gonna, it's again academic, but it says the mayor, the other thing said, resolution of city council for the, should it be something like that, a resolution of city council to call a special.
Instead of the mayor.
I'm sorry?
Instead of, of course, as mayor.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, it's just one of those, such, you know, the, the council shall specify the length of unexpired term, or, you know, I, or is that, I'm gonna say derigger, that's probably like from state, kind of copied from state stuff, that's all.
Let me make sure I follow you there. So, 3.03.03 is, is.
The second.
Procedural in terms, the mayor has to call it.
The mayor has to call the, such proclamation shall specify the length of the unexpired term or terms to be filled, yeah, no, it's no problem.
Because she has no choice but to do it, it's a notice.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I forgot, again, 3, 307 takes care of all the other stuff, got it? Never mind. That's just basically announcing.
Is everybody good if we go, get a little further through it?
No.
3.03.04, a special election for a purpose other than the nomination of ref.
Or referendum.
Or referendum. Is there a reason it's written that way? I'm gonna see if we can't find your old, you know, when this was adopted, maybe that's just the way it's typed up. Bear with me.
In the editor's note, it uses the words referendum.
Well, is this for nomination, other than, would this be if, I'm gonna say, put out for bonds, or put out for?
Oh, I'm just, I'm just talking about the word RAF.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I would like for your charter not to, I printed this off of Muni code, so. This was done in.
Hold on a minute.
Madam Clerk, do you know when the charter was adopted, this version? That section doesn't have any adoption notes under it.
Yeah, I was gonna say 11, 11 or 12, yeah, somewhere around there.
Okay. A special election for a purpose other than the nomination or referendum of city council members. That just.
Doesn't make sense.
Doesn't make sense to me, no.
Just take those out.
Any appetite to just clean up that house?
Perhaps it's recall.
Yeah, okay.
No, I think it's.
Darren?
Yes?
We were just looking, perhaps it's recall.
It's recall, yeah.
Or recall.
You have, you have, you have a referendum.
Ref, that's in the translation of a.
A special election for a purpose other than the nomination or recall by referendum, or recall of city council members. That's a, that's a logical interpretation.
Yeah, that's what we're thinking, it might be recall instead of ref, and just in the trends, in the scanning and all, word, word changed it. Sounds like it might be recall.
It makes sense to me. The voters will certainly approve recalls, you know, you know you can vote on that one. May be authorized by resolution at any time of the city council, provided not less than 30 days nor more than 60 days intervene between the date of the adoption of the resolution and the date of the election, unless a different time be otherwise provided in this act, by ordinance or by statutory law or constitutional provisions, under authority of which the election is called. Any matter or matters which by the terms of this charter may be submitted to the electors of the city at any special election may be submitted and voted upon at a regular municipal election. Other than line one, any issues there with anyone? 3.03.10, nominating petitions. The nomination of all candidates for elective offices under this act shall be made by nominating petitions. Yes, ma'am?
Some of us are missing a page. Lars had the page, it goes to 307. See, I didn't have that.
I have the double secret. I have the double secret charter.
I don't have that either.
Because he kept mentioning that 07.
3.07.
And I didn't know, I didn't have that page.
May I come look over your shoulder?
That's like two pages beyond this.
Yeah.
3.07.
Can I look at what you have? All right, I'll look at it.
I got this from Lars just because he kept mentioning 07. But I, mine, like yours, jumped from 03, 03, 04 to 03, 03, 10. With an 07, 8.
They were reserved.
Well, that's right. 3.07.
They were not reserved.
3.07 is two more pages beyond.
Are you looking at 3.07 or 3.03? Let me see what you're...
All right, it's 3.0307.
So we just did what? This?
No.
No, no, here. Okay.
And then it says 3.0305 are reserved.
And mine goes to 3.0310.
Right.
But Lars has 3.0307.
No, 3.07. No, that's 3.07.
3.07.
Comes later.
But where?
Two more pages.
When you keep going, so it's 3.03, then you're going to go 3.04.
You turn two more pages, it'll be there.
Okay, she's putting here 3.03.17.
We've been saying, I think it's, we've been saying 3.037. We've been crossing it.
Lars' problem.
Yeah, okay.
There is not one. There's a reserve. That's okay.
No worries. I think we've been saying 3.037.
Let it go, Lars.
Well, Catherine said the second one.
I did.
So 3.03.10 uses the word "act," and it should be charter.
3.0310.
10 nominations, petitions.
In the past, do these grammatical things still three times?
And then 3.03.04 does the same thing. It uses the word "act."
Do a search and replace them all those and check them out. Have my best friend go on.
"The name of any elector of the city having the necessary qualifications to hold the office may be nominated for the election to such office when a petition shall be filed with the city clerk, signed by not less than 25 registered voters of the city. The signatures to a nominating petition need not all be on one paper, other than the reference to an act, the act."
Do we think it's time we raise that amount of signatures? I think it was 25 in 1988 when I moved here.
I don't care. I mean, how many would be a right number?
9,000 people. Six of them.
50?
That's what it means. Yeah, double it. That's kind of hard.
Four.
Four, yeah, three.
Four.
They're going the wrong way, sorry. Wait.
Somebody votes like that.
No. 50 might be more suitable.
So I will throw out there for you, if somebody can get 25 signatures, they probably get 50. If you move it to 1,000 and, you know...
You can probably do 1,000, just takes a lot of work to do 1,000.
Right.
People, they can run, they're going to sign it.
That is a lot of work.
It's a lot of paper.
That's a lot of people.
I wasn't suggesting that you do that by any stretch. I was just...
I would think in a city of almost 40,000 people, 100 signatures is a reasonable amount to have to get to qualify.
Well, it's 40,000 people, 18,000.
They have to be registered voters.
Right, they can vote. They have to be registered voters. There's only 18,000 people there, within the 40,000.
I would say if the goal is to suppress participation, raise the number. If not, leave it. And I agree that if we could get 25 signatures, chances are we could get 50 or 100. And the more diddling we do with this and the more we present this to the voters with these tweaks, the more skeptically they'll view the entire document, I believe.
I mean, 25, it just shows that they're interested enough that they got so many, 25 people to sign it, but you don't want to hurdle. You don't want to put a hurdle in front of them. And 100 and something dollars.
They gotta pay your money.
You gotta pay your money, too.
I was surprised it was only 25.
Yeah.
Let's go through, we'll do one more if that's okay with everybody. 3.0311, form of petitions, and then we'll...
If you just remember what the city clerk had submitted, I think she asked, we strike that last line. "The signatures to a nominating petition need not all be on one paper."
Oh, yeah.
I believe that process is now antiquated. That's not the correct process with the supervisor of elections. Correct, Mr. Cobb? That last sentence?
Ryan, on 3.0310, the last sentence says, the 25 signatures, paraphrasing, do not all need to be on the same piece of paper.
Yes, the, actually, I think the form, the standard forms now only have maybe five on one page, so only have one on one page?
One or two, yes. I think it's shrunk down to now one, yeah.
They're like a three-by-five card now. I mean, they're, they're not large. So, yes, it would be very difficult to do that. That sentence probably should go.
Well, there, this says, "The signatures to a nominating petition need not all be on one paper." So it's not inconsistent with what we're doing now where the cards, you know, those little three-by-five cards get signed. Madam Clerk, you good?
There's a form that the supervisor of elections only accepts. It gets like a half a page, it's, the, the, the fill-out form itself doesn't have a page.
Well, yes.
Yeah, we get...
We will only take one per page.
Understand.
And is that called a candidate petition?
Hang on one sec. The issue here is, there was a concern that, Madam Clerk, that you wanted to remove from the charter the language that says, "The signatures do not need to be on one sheet of paper," which would be consistent with what the clerk does. It's one signature per page. Okay. So I think we're...
We're leaving it in. It doesn't matter, yeah. It's flying in, doesn't do anything, yeah.
I mean, but could you, but if we're going to change it, we're taking it off, are we going to leave it alone?
We're going to leave it alone.
It doesn't really hurt anything.
Doesn't hurt anything.
Basically, what it sounds like is we conform to what the county supervisor...
Yes, sir.
So you could just say that, the next two years from now, it may be totally different than that.
Well, probably not.
They used to just, oh, sign it one form.
Okay, so let me, let me, I'm going to clarify, and Madam Clerk or anybody, feel free to interrupt. Currently, when you sign your nominating petition, it's one person, one elector or one voter signs per sheet, correct? Your charter is consistent with that process as it is written. So we're good, you don't need to change anything, and everything works very well, unless you want to change for the sake of change.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good on that. I think then, you...
I question the verbiage of nominating petition. Is the form from the supervisor of elections not called the candidate petition?
That's okay. I can tell you what it...
What is it called, candidate petition?
It probably is. That's okay, there's not an inconsistency there.
It's a generic term.
Yeah, it's a, you know, you've got to get people to sign the, sign for you. That's okay.
I think we had a failure to communicate.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I was just questioning the verbiage that's used here for nominating petition. Should it not be consistent with what the supervisor of election calls the form?
We can, if you, if this body would like to recommend or put out to the vote, recommend to put out to the voters that we change the word nominating petition to whatever is on the supervisor of elections forms now, that is your prerogative, and you absolutely can do that. That's for you to decide, not up to me. All I'm telling you is that, as it is written now, where it uses the term nominated, nominating petition, and the fact that the clerk, not the clerk, but the supervisor is using a candidate petition or whatever the form name is, does not create a legal problem where people won't be able to go get the petitions and qualify for office.
I understand that.
If you would like to change it to be consistent with whatever the supervisor is calling it today, certainly your prerogative.
How about if we put a pin in this one? We don't want to put so many things out there. It would create voter fatigue. And so if we have only a few things that we end up with, we could put this on. If we have a grocery list that's real long, this one is one that could wait for another.
Well, we could also throw a scribbler's error type one. That just says, that relieves the, well, and lists what they are, but just relieves errors or omissions and/or, you know, tidy out things that are, and just put in if we want to change, get rid of. The signature be nominating, just that last line in 3.310, we can strike that if we need to, put in. Or if there's other ones, like, again, the word "act" for charter, it's technically a scribbler, it's a scribbler's error and/or if the re really means recall, and we can clean up and just have one provision that says to clean up all.
Yes.
We've had that in previous charter matters, hey, we're just cleaning things up that either match state statute, there's others that were superseded by state statutes, just throw it all in one question.
Which would include Mr. Elkhyn's recommendation of the word charter instead of act?
Act, yeah, exactly. That's what I mean, yeah, exact, act for charter, and just lump those together in one scribbler's type, whatever error.
And typically, when I've seen it...
I think it should be, I think it should be referenced by what the form is actually called.
Good.
Because when you ask people to sign it...
And what is the, what is, what is it called, the form?
Candidate petition.
Candidate petition.
Which makes sense because you're actually not nominating somebody with it.
And I've seen the ballot language say, correct the charter, correct the references in the charter, type, you know, whatever it is, so it looks innocuous to the voter. Okay.
We changed 3.0310 also to candidate?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Got that, got that here. All right. Everybody pretty good?
Yes.
For the night?
Mr. Elkhyn?
Yes, ma'am.
If you look at 3.0311, the first sentence says, "Nominating petitions shall be in a form prescribed by the city manager."
Okay, we'll, we'll come to 3.0311 next time, and your point's well taken. It's clearly the city manager isn't going to prescribe the form, we're going to use the standard form. Or he could prescribe the form that the supervisor of election, yeah. Any, before we break for the night, I'm going to, I'm going to ask the clerk to, you know, we're going to formally announce the conclusion of this night's meeting. The recording will stop, and then I will just ask that, once we do this, let's not talk about the charter anymore amongst ourselves here in the room. So anything else before we do that?
Go ahead, sign it. Next week, or next time we meet, I was, it's actually on my vacation, and I wasn't going to be here, but are we going to be voting on anything then?
No, sir. No, we will not vote until, we'll see how far we get at the next meeting, and then we'll bring back actionable items at the end that we'll debate and vote on.
You reminded me on two things, the two dates, April 9th and May 21st. April 9th is Holy Thursday, May 21st is the Ascension, Holy Day of Obligation, Wednesday, Holy Week Day. So I'm just going to throw that out there to...
I was just going to bring up the same point.
Yeah, Holy Thursday is Holy Thursday, that's probably a rough, for those that, I'm just going to say, if you're Catholic, that's a biggie.
Yeah, so this is what happens when you hire a Jew for your facility.
Yeah, Holy Thursday, the 9th, and the 21st is the Ascension, which is a day of obligation, but that's not as significant, no offense, but the Holy Thursday is the April 9th is a...
So make a note that the dinner you provide should be fish sticks.
So, well, let's talk about that before we conclude the meeting. I mean, Madam Clerk, I know we kind of said it, I'm, and I know we wanted to pick Thursdays, so we picked Thursdays at 6:30. Here's my thought. We, have you already noticed the meeting dates? No? Okay. We're making pretty good progress. I have a feeling that we get in here at 6:30 on March, in two weeks, on March 19th, that we're going to, you know, sections three and four are the tough pieces, that we might make good progress, we may be able to just say skip April 9th, but you also, what's April 23rd?
No, it's, no, May 21st.
May 21st.
That's a long way off.
I don't, I don't think we're going to, I think, I have a sentence, and I'm not saying this to necessarily flatter you, this is a good group and we're making good progress, so I don't think we're going to... When I scheduled this and went through, thought through the schedule with Mr. Cobb, I said, let's have the 21st as a just-in-case. I know the city would, the commission would like that, or the city council would like that.
And that's just, I'm going to say, and I say this way, it's not as, Holy Thursday is a much more important, again, that Thursday is not if we needed it, that's not, I just wanted to point out that that's also Holy Day of Obligation. So for those that need to go to mass early or do anything, it would be something they could take care of, it's not as...
Well, let's...
What about April 2nd?
I think I may not be able to be here April 2nd, but let me, I don't recall, so let me check.
I'm not going to be on the 2nd.
Where are you going?
Yeah.
No. Where are you going this time?
Yeah, I can't be here on April 2nd.
No, I don't disagree. I think if everybody, if you're comfortable with the way we're going, we're fine, you know, we've got enough gates currently that we're fine, but I just wanted to point out that April 9th is...
It's not possible to have it on a Wednesday, the night before?
We can, we can...
Is the city not available that night?
I can't do it.
Yeah. Well, let's do, let me, let me, a couple thoughts. One is, we've made really good progress tonight. Let's, we're going to meet on March 19th, that seems to be good for everybody, in two weeks. And maybe prepare to just go a little bit longer if we need to, and see how far we get on March 19th. We may get, we may get pretty far along, that we could just say, we're not going to do the April 9th meeting and bring it back for April 23rd, and I feel like we're making good progress. So let's just play it by ear for right now, be aware of it.
That's good.